If we could have a roll call, please, Zach.
Elia.
Here.
Estrada.
Here.
Gomber, you.
Stricker.
Here.
Lehman.
Here.
Okay, Nebraska Open Meetings Act. For all interested parties, a copy of the Nebraska Open Meeting Act is posted on the bulletin board at the south wall of the council chambers. Number three, notice of changes in agenda by the city manager. Additions may not be made to this agenda less than twenty-four hours before the beginning of the meeting unless added under item four of this agenda. Number four, citizens with business not scheduled on the agenda as required by state law, no matter. May be considered under this item unless council determines that the matter requires emergency action. And five, if we could have approval of the planning commission meeting minutes from August twelfth, twenty twenty-four.
Have a question, hon.
Okay.
So the, there's an item fourteen. After adjournment with another motion and vote. I just want to make sure that that was mistaken. So I'd make a motion to approve with the removal of item fourteen on the. The meeting minutes of record.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, please, Zach.
Stricker.
Yes.
Lehman.
Yes.
Elia.
Yes.
Estrada.
Yes.
Gomber.
Okay, number six, public hearing. A, planning commission to conduct a public hearing to consider a special use permit for residential use in a commercial building at lot sixteen A. Munus replat commonly identified as two oh two East Overland Drive. We'll open the public hearing, Zach.
So this is a special use permit for residential dwelling units in C three zoning district. This building is located at second and East Overland, and the property owner Adela Casillas is wanting to put in three apartments in the back. It's in line with comprehensive plan, which identifies this as the East Overland area and residential is a recommended zone. So apartments in this building would be okay with that. All the utilities are already there. And then just a little recap on this, special use permits are reviewed and approved by the planning commission. So this will not go to city council following this. As for parking, the three apartments, that's off-street parking is one point five spaces per dwelling unit. Which comes out to be four and a half, and then by code, we have to round that up since it's a half or more. So that we five spaces needed, which there are five. Located to the rear of the building. Just want to point out, though, that it would require driving on the neighboring property owners. Property to access these, there's not enough room for a parking aisle. So I did contact that neighbor, Sal Munios, and he did not have an issue with it, and there's no formal access easement. And when it was replatted, that this was kind of taken into consideration in twenty twenty-two. And as part of that. I met with Ms. Casillas and recommended, you know, potentially pursuing a access easement to be dedicated in the future. And in lieu of that, we assigned some conditions to the special use permit, just in case an issue were to come. But findings of facts to approve. It's in line with a comprehensive plan. Apartments represent a service required by the. Required by the community, it would not be injurious to neighboring uses. The use will not create special hazard or problems, you know, with the, with the conditions, that would make sure that Munios's property is. Clear. So and then the finding of fact does not approve would be there's not enough room for the parking aisle on the property. So with that being said, staff recommends planning commission issue the special use permit to Adela Casillas. For residential uses at lot sixteen A, Munios replat. Commonly identified as two oh two East Overland with the following conditions. Occupants and users of lot sixteen shall not park vehicles or cause materials or personal property to remain on lot fifteen A, which would be the property to the south of this building. And then also occupants and users of lot sixteen A shall not block access to lot fifteen A. With now special attention to the gate, that is for the fenced-in construction yard. Since that would block it. And then the property owner is here, if you have any questions.
Thank you, Zach. You want to come up and. And talk, so everybody here that would. Do you have some?
Hello.
Can she sign names?
Yes.
Yep, there's a sheet right over there. See if you write your name down.
Here.
So you want to talk. Your, but your plans here or?
Just, I have plans to do three, like I, like he says, three apartments and. I talked to Logan about doing a different address for the apartments. And I also talked to.
Chris.
Chris. About. For safety for the. What is it called? Fire, fire. To him for the special permit. Not sure what else I need to do.
So do we have any questions?
Yeah, I got a question too. Go ahead, go ahead. My question is, I saw, I guess more for Zach as well, but have you gotten a formal access easement with Mr. Munios? Or you haven't done that yet? So that's not recommended on the staff recommendation necessarily.
It's recommended, and it's up to Mr. Munios, since it's his property.
But it kind of doesn't work unless it has that, correct? In a way, and then.
Yeah, right now it's verbal.
Just a verbal, but that's, that's okay going forward that way?
Conditions on.
Okay, and Sal, if Munios is aware of, okay. I didn't know if you need to get something on paper or not, I just saw it was that, so. Okay.
So what, so what if Sal changes his mind?
Yeah.
She can still access the parking from second, she loses three parking stalls in the back. But there is parking available in the front, so it should be all right. For off-street parking.
So, so the parking spaces are okay without the ones in the back or the ones?
Yeah, there's sufficient parking on the sides, and there's still access to those, you wouldn't be able to get the five because you'd have to rotate them. To get, without driving on Mr. Munios's property. So there'd still be two in the back, and then there's, there's space in the front for to get the other three.
Okay, so if there's a empty portion of the building, I kind of drove by and looked. And that could potentially be another business. And then it's take, and you use the parking. Three spaces that you now can't use in the back for the front for residents, and then you don't have any for the business, and so it's always putting it behind. I think that it's, when you say. That, that part of the condition is, is for access is, is it, at what point in time, and is that to have a recorded access easement or?
I mean, it would be ideal, but it's up to Mr. Munios, since it's his property, the city can't require him to have that. He has these five with it, and there's still access to those parking stalls. It would limit the business in front, but you're just using it for storage, which has very low parking requirements of any, so. It would just limit the business.
It's all good when everybody's happy with each other.
Right, it's just the intent of the conditions, you know.
And so, but the other thing you addressed, but are you done? Yeah, I just, that was my question I brought up. So the others I had, I just want to make sure that you, and it sounds like you understand that addressing was one of the things that, that. Stuck out to me for people that might need emergency services.
Yep, we're going to address it off of second avenue with suite numbers.
Okay.
We've already got that taken care of.
Sweet. And then the other was the, with the change in. And use occupancy and use, then, so you're keenly aware of the, of the requirements for the fire suppression in lieu of egress windows for the.
Yes.
The two apartments. I just want to make sure, because sometimes those things are surprises. But I don't, I want you to go on with your eyes wide open.
No, I'm aware, I'm aware of.
Okay, and it sounds like Chris has talked to you.
Yeah, I talked to Chris.
I don't have any more questions.
Any other questions?
No.
So will this affect EMS or fire department access to, with all vehicles in the back with Sal?
Well, that's great that you brought that up, because I started thinking of one of the things. So I have, I have been in discussions with her, so basically she, last week we talked, she's going to put a. Easement window on that apartment that's going to be on the far west side, so that will take out the sprinkler system for that far apartment there on the left side of the complex. But then there'll be sprinkler systems in the last two departments. As far as easement access, that's kind of my next question, as someone who worked for Al over nine years. What's the utility easement look like for that area and house services, because that'd be the only other thing that's height for our fire truck. I guess they're not going to run across it now, but I'm not sure if that's a very easement over there, but that's something to consider. There's a private separate power meters and stuff for those apartments, so. Plus utilities for internet, anything like that, so where are those?
What were you saying about heights?
Like the height, you know, how high are they going to be?
Across the public street? Or where?
Potentially, I guess, it's aerial, aerial over there, because from a cable TV perspective, if there's utility poles. They'll be the next lowest one on that hole, so that's why you see. Well, you have to chart up top and tell the next, so on and so forth. So I guess my next question would be for, and to your question, with the height of our fire trucks, where is that utility, because that's coming into play? And where is it going to be at?
Oh, I see what you're saying, because the building's low, so is the truck going to be too tall to get under the, the lines? I know what you're saying.
So what level are the apartments, are they ground level or upper level? Ground level, yeah, they're ground.
But Zach, wouldn't, wouldn't building and zoning run into this issue when you're talking, like, say, say she wanted to expand the back area, not into apartments, but still would need like an arrow connection at that time? You'd kind of run into that same, same issue, right, and so that would kind of building and zoning would take care of that, or would have the correct. Or is that an issue before, we need to look at before the special use permit?
Telecommunications.
Is that the primary?
Handled privately.
Privately.
City looks at water source.
Because there's other options they could look and say, hey, cities not going to allow this for safety issues at the, at the building.
I guess sanitation, I mean, if we look at it from a city perspective, not from a private entity, sanitation goes.
For sure, for sure, but either way, you're going to have the utility easement where it's at, whether it's going to be a C two, C three building with, sorry, without a special use permit or with this, correct? I just kind of, you know, look at it that way, so.
I'm looking at it, because you, we have people that will build, you know, they'll open up a little apartment and garage.
Yeah, but special use permit in C two still, so.
And you have those aerial drops, and you can really load it down those alleys.
So that would maybe be one of those where they wouldn't have to, couldn't, couldn't get a normal telecommunications line in there, correct? But still be able to build as long as they just don't have.
Right, because that would also have our power lines on top of that too, so.
But power lines are there, they're, they're kind of there, because they already have to feed the building, correct?
Okay, Jerry.
Right, Zach, am I off? I don't know, but, okay. Okay, I guess I want to make sure, and on what you're saying, are you saying the heights of them on the, on either that property or the one where the easement is provided?
I guess for access for fire out through rad, so if we're turning on the second avenue, let's just say we have to access that part, you know, where is our utility line there right now, are they aerial or are they buried? Because like, we have to go to the first parking lot, and that parking lot is the back for the apartment number two, you know, where are those? Are they, are they high enough so that our trucks can get in there?
I'm sure they can, so, so really it has to do a little bit too with the public, or the easement, the public street. And I'm guessing that. Probably run into this somewhere before, maybe put risers on. Boles or something, I, I think it's. It'd be nice to have it all solved, but I just don't know that we.
Yeah, it would depend on what.
But it's a good.
There'd be a right away permit that had to be issued, and at that time, we would evaluate the location of that private utility. But yeah, during this time, we don't, we don't consider gas or telecommunications since it's private.
But nevertheless, if it came down to that, I know. They would probably put a new pole or something to make it higher, I, I would. Something to.
Building something that's interesting for her. Other than that, she's been pretty receptive to the fire sprinkler system, she understands it's going to come out of the hole. At a cost, but she's been pretty receptive and easy to work with on that, so.
And you're aware that those have ongoing maintenance costs?
Yeah.
So, so those are an annual cost, right, for, for those systems, is that correct? I can kind of remember.
Yeah, so sprinkler systems, there is an annual cost. Or you can hire somebody else to, or people shop around. We, yeah, they come out, and there's an annual cost, and of course, if they find any issues, it's a, those additional costs that come with that.
So this is a wet system or a dry system?
It'll, it'll be a thirteen hour system, more likely probably a wet system. And then, of course. Next question, probably is going to be front and freezing, any issues there? Where it's at, those apartments are small, and they're about five hundred square feet. With the heat and stuff, as long as there's utilities and stuff, there should be very. And we're probably talking. Maybe. Four heads, five heads at the most for that, for those apartments, I'm not that bridge, so.
But those are required anytime you do residential on a C through heavy, heavy industrial in the same building, correct?
Not necessarily, it depends on the occupancy, so usually.
Two or above two?
Yeah, so I mean, yeah, the reason why we're involved in this one is because it's more than two, and it's considered.
So since she has egress in multiple ways on that west unit, she doesn't need required sprinklers, is that what I'm hearing from you?
Yeah, so she asked me last week, she's like, if I had to.
So you're willing to negotiate, work with her on that, okay, I see, I see why, why you didn't require the whole building.
Is that, do you guys understand why we're required, if we take out the commercial in that apartments?
Yes, sir, because it's a budding C three and, and it's, it's a C three. With a business, business application already with residential, correct?
Not, yes and no, so to add on to that, so the other reason why she's required to have a sprinkler system is because those apartments have one form of egress.
Right.
So had she had two, like going through the office space and the common area, it wouldn't necessarily be required, but since there's like one egress, where she's required to have it.
Since she has three units, all right, good, okay. It's an alternative compliance to the lack of egress windows for the two. Yep.
Okay, so, any more questions? Okay, thank you. So, anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve based on the staff's findings, the facts, and conditions of the special use permit.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, roll call, please, Zach.
Estrada.
Yes.
Gomber. Stricker.
Yes.
Lehman.
Yes.
Elia.
Yes.
Okay, B, planning commission to conduct a public hearing to consider a final plat of lots three R and four R. Block eleven Fairway Estates commonly identified as nine oh five and nine seventeen Flamingo Court. We'll open the public hearing, Zach.
All right, so this is a replat up at the Country Club Fairway Estates. The property owners, Paul and Pamela Adams, are changing the property lines on their building, or their lot, excuse me, by taking part of block fourteen, which is the golf courses property, and then. There are some property line adjustments with their property, the proposed lot four R and the neighbor's property, lot three R. There, as you can see, the property lines are pretty close to the building, so these changes will help bring that more to compliance with setbacks. And the main reason this is going to the planning commission is the easements on the proposed lot four A are being relocated. So by state statute, staff can't do an administrative approval if there's a change in easement through right of way. So it's a pretty, pretty basic replat, and with that, staff recommends a, has a recommendation on approval for this replat, and the property owners are here.
Property owner want to come up and?
I guess what we're. When we bought that property, there is a. Property lines were very, very narrow. And we were adding it, we wanted to do an addition onto the south side of our house. And we couldn't do it because the property lines were right up against it, so we approached the. Golf course about purchasing. A strip of land on the south side. To expand our, our house and easements out there. And then on the north side, we talked to our adjacent landowner, and. That property line came right across the edge of our house, actually, the corner of our house was on their property. And so we came into agreement to buy a portion of that to straighten up the lots and just kind of clean up the property on what we're doing. And on the south side, we're going to have to change the utilities. Move those utilities, the gas, the electric, and any of the internet, charter, and also alo. And we came to agreement with all those parties, and in fact, they're going to be starting to do some of that construction. Here in a couple of weeks if we get everything approved. So, and we're going to be moving the utilities at our expense, so there's no cost to, to anyone on that. So. Anybody got any questions?
I do have clarification, so. Can somebody point out the, where the, this, this is not the, this is the existing condition?
Right.
Okay, what is the proposed condition? Okay, the dash was his existing.
Dash or former.
Former, yes, okay.
Correct.
And we got a new, a new ten-foot easement. On the south, on the outside of the properties, and that's where all the utilities are going to be. The utilities right now are just kind of meandering through there, and there's just no rhyme or reason to them at all. And the gas line was about all three foot away from our patio. And so we're moving those all out to the edge of the property. And we've got agreement with the golf course to buy that little strip of land that we need. And also, we've got an agreement with our, the neighbor's land, that we're going to buy that little strip of land right there, so. Just kind of cleans it up and evens everything out there.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We have a motion?
We have a motion to approve based on the replat, or, yeah, the replat in this case, based on the findings of fact from staff.
Do we have a second?
All second.
Okay. Roll call, please, Zach.
Gomber?
Yes.
Yes.
Lehman?
Yes.
Elia?
Yes.
Estrada?
Yes.
Okay, next. C, planning commission to conduct a public hearing to consider a rezone of tax lot four B, section twenty-seven, township twenty-two, north range fifty-five. West of the six P M, commonly identified as the northeast corner of Avenue K and South Beltline Highway West. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing, Zach.
All right, so this proposed rezone is the ABC Nursery property on Avenue K and Beltline. There's three properties to the west of the main property. That are currently zoned residential, and the property owner, Jim Newworth, is requesting to change that to C three, so all of them are the same zone. As for staff comments, this is an expansion of the existing C three district, the east, and then there's also one, you know, fairly, fairly close on Avenue L. You know, the purpose of this is to allow for the property owner to sell all the properties as commercial ones. And then the comprehensive plan does identify this land as residential. However, staff would recommend this rezone because these, this property is located in the floodplain. And as part of our floodplain ordinance, the city does prefer commercial, industrial, agricultural uses over residential uses in the floodplain, so. We would disagree with the comprehensive plan. And then it's illegal not conforming use, so it'd just be bringing that into conformance. And then, just finally, this is a tax lot, which the city considers unplanted land, so. If a future buyer were want to build, would want to build on it, it would need to be platted. With that being said, staff recommends planning commission make a positive recommendation on the approval of the rezone of tax lot four B to city council.
Thank you. Property owner here, I'm going to say again.
When I brought the property that the nursery is setting on, the other property came immediately available because something was. In there with being in a floodplain, so when I bought it. It was going to get changed to C three, and, you know, I just presumed it had, but it just hasn't, so. I'm seventy-six, and so I'm looking, I'm clearing the property all off, I'm going to pretty much retire and, and just have it available. You know, I need to do something else.
Is that all the property, including your existing?
Yeah, that'd be all. Yeah, the, the whole thing, and it's a, there's a construction company that has went in to the north of me there, and then also. Dollar General went up there, so. Just went, Collegan is to the east of me there, just want to get things cleaned up, so it will work for some.
Thank you, does anybody have any questions?
Is there any comments from any other staff or anything, like, is there, is there, is there existing infrastructure there to support commercial?
Yeah, you know, there's no stormwater infrastructure in that part of town, but there is water, storm, or water sewer there, and then. It is a state access to Beltline, so the access isn't limited to that easement, it's the front Collegan, there's a driveway right there, otherwise to Avenue K, there's access to these, so.
From a fire department perspective, there's a hydrant across the street from South Beltline, I really wouldn't count that because it's really found upon the shut down main arteries, I'm not sure why.
Say it again.
There's a fire hydrant on the south side of South Beltline. At the corner there, actually, where the.
There's also one right at the corner of mine.
Yep, yep.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and then there's one along Avenue K. I don't remember, is that, is that dead end, Taylor, does anyone know what that?
So if, if that's dead end, you test the flow of that?
The city water department, I guess, they're supposed to be at least every five years.
Yeah, I expect, yes, for a couple of years ago.
So is that hydrant that's at the corner of your property, is that city infrastructure or is that private?
City.
City, okay.
Depending on what gets built on those lots. Depending on the fire load, and these, we may have to add more hydrants along that corridor there, along Avenue K.
Yeah, you have room to do that.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's Elia.
Thank you. Thank you, anybody else have any comments or anything? Do we have a motion, please?
I'd like to, at first, I wasn't sure how to take this, and, but I think that the staff's report. With the commercial that's actually to the west of that. Sewer service. I, I think it, it probably is a good transition to, to clean that up, and then I thought about the residential, you know, the. Cost of housing, affordable housing is what's talked a lot about, and putting those in a floodplain just adds, adds to the cost, of course, it does to commercial as well, but. With the housing shortage, I think that. Adding that cost of getting it out of the floodplain is the way to go, might be, or the, the way to go in my mind is to be commercial, and I'm going to be a yes for it.
Motion?
A motion to approve, uh, the, uh, rezone.
Do we have a second?
I can second.
Okay, roll call please, Zach.
Stricker?
Yes.
Wayman?
Yes.
Elijah?
Yes.
Astrada?
Yes.
Conver?
So, so before I answer, do we have, do we know what the, the, uh, certification level is to bring that out of the flood zone?
To be above basic flood elevation?
So, is that already where, uh, that's been surveyed and that's where we're at, right? Sorry.
It would, and, you know, depending on what route they want to go, if they want to elevate that one, if they want to, um, elevate to the flood group, um, so. Whatever they want to, they just have to decide which route they want to go, and if it's commercial, they, they have a little more options than just elevating.
Okay, I just, it's not a big deal. Yes.
Okay, number seven, new business, Commissioner Jerry Stricker to announce his resignation from the Planning Commission.
Yes, I just wanted to let everybody know that I'm, uh, resigning from Planning Commission, not because I'm a quitter, but because I can't hold two positions because I'll be a city councillor, effectively December center. Thank you.
Staff reports, uh, staff to update Planning Commission on comp plan.
Um, so mid-October, our consultant, our planning consultant was in town for a week, doing focus group meetings and then, um, we held three town hall meetings. Uh, turnout at the town hall meeting was disappointing, but, um, they seemed to have gotten some good data, some good information from that, and same with the focus groups. The surveys are currently out online, um, and there's paper copies currently available here at City Hall, um, at the library and then also at the Gearing Senior Center. So those will be out for a while and can be accessed off, um, online at our website, and I have some postcards too, if anybody wants, um, postcards about the surveys. They're working on, uh, drafting it right now, um, we've reviewed some of it. And then they just finished a promotional video, I believe, which is now on the website, um, for the comprehensive plan. And, uh, I guess, uh, they want to meet with Planning Commission in January, so we'll try to, did January ninth, um, meeting.
That's on the city website, the promotional video?
It will be on the comprehensive plan.
Comprehensive website.
Then I can be accessed through the city's website either, um, at the bottom at the events and news.
Cool.
If you scroll down, uh, that blue one right there, big blue one.
Okay, cool.
If you go up to, uh, departments to development services, there should be.
A link to it.
Yeah, comprehensive plan webpage at the bottom of that, so. But yeah. That one's kind of long.
Let's go on to B, and staff to update Planning Commission on zoning code updates.
Um, so, start on the zoning code updates, just last January, uh, with the comprehensive plan, everything's kind of been on hold. We've, we've done a couple of little things here and there, but until the comprehensive plan gets done, um, it'll mostly be held back for that unless there's minor fixes. Um, the only main thing, the biggest thing I might be working on is the sign code, um, just so it becomes more of a content neutral, uh, sign code that we can enforce as currently, we can enforce, uh, the majority of our political sign codes, at least. Uh, just to simplify it too, so, working on that, um, but yeah, it's, it's still gonna happen and just delay.
Okay, thank you, Zach. And the next scheduled meeting is December ninth, twenty twenty-five, twenty-four, sorry, twenty-four. I'm going to your head, yeah, okay, and then adjournment, can we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.